All driving on one six. Numbers like. Cheer. A five. Uh, third month. About just. Awesome. Yeah. Well. I don't. I don't. Oh, okay. Next year. Well, yeah, make it here. Actually. I'll have. And so. Thanks.
Okay. Um. Anything like right? Yeah. Yeah. I just. Okay. I'll. That's. Yeah. I would love. That's. Yeah. Like ten hundred. I got a spark. I'm just. I'll keep somebody. You know, I'm. That's what I mean. That's. He's. It's one. There you go. Watch it there. I'm here. So that's. Oh. Awesome. It's pretty. It's take on the. Well, it's. Yeah. It's. Yeah. It looks very. It's. How 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 they first. Good. Yeah. Well, I mean. Uh, nine or five. Oh, so yeah, trapped in. I started out as a good range. Yeah. You started. Started up quick. Started up quick and then this kind of started. And then you got it. Long.
Okay, today is August fifth, two thousand and twenty-five is two forty-five. This is Durango City Council study session. Could we have roll call?
Counselor Coso.
Present.
Counselor Beal.
Here.
Mayor Proton Woodruff.
Here.
Mayor Yasi.
Here.
And Counselor Gonzalez.
Present.
Well. Sorry that I got ahead of my agenda. Mayor is a reading of the Indigenous Land Acknowledgement.
This is a call to honor and respect Indigenous sovereignty and self-determination. As residents and visitors of Durango, we are called upon to educate ourselves about the history and cultural heritage of the land we inhabit. The city of Durango is situated on the ancestral homelands and territories of the Njuju, Ute, Hickorya Apache, Apache, Pueblos of New Mexico, Hopi-Sinom, Hopi, and Denai-Navajo nations. The original stewards of this land were forcibly removed and exposed to countless atrocities by the United States government, including repeatedly broken treaties, forced assimilation, the tragic legacy of Indian boarding schools, and the loss of ancestral homelands. We recognize lasting generational trauma exists within Native communities today. We affirm the continuing importance of ancestral sites to descendant communities as integral to the living cultural landscape. This acknowledgement only becomes meaningful when combined with accountable relationships and informed actions. May this serve as a step toward inclusion and reconciliation. This.
The next item on the agenda, Mayor, is discussion regarding impossible minimum wage requirement from the worker point of view.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Councillors. This is the second scheduled conversation regarding minimum wage consideration from the previous presentation that we had dated May sixth. Um, with us today is Annalise Lassiter from Durango Forward. She has coordinated a handful of speakers. The speakers listed here in bold will be calling in remotely, and they will go through presentations for you. With that, I'd like to introduce Annalise Lassiter to introduce our speakers.
Will appear in person, and several are going to be joining us virtually. They're all on cue and all ready to tap in. They'll be speaking for approximately five minutes each because we hope to leave a good amount of time for Q and A and lots of discussion. So first, we have Barbara McGlocklin.
I'm in person. Just thought I'd let you know this is the real me. There's no AI here. Hello, council members. I'm Barbara McGlocklin. I'm a former state representative and most proudly a former Durango teacher. I am honored to speak in front of you today on an issue I believe is so important to the people who live in the city of Durango, livable wages. When I was a state legislator in nineteen, in two thousand and nineteen, I co-sponsored a bill, House Bill nineteen twelve ten, concerning local government and a livable wage. Basically, it gives local governments permission to establish a minimum wage higher than the states for people who work here. In our discussions of the bill, legislators talked about the importance of not always mandating statewide decisions, but instead letting local governments decide what is important for their local constituents. These constituents have also been my constituents. In this case, I see affordable housing, living close to work, buying locally, and sustainable employment as extraordinarily important issues and something you have the power to address. Imagine having a workforce that can walk, bike, or drive to work every day. Imagine that they eat lunch in Durango, shop in Durango, and buy groceries in Durango. Their children are safe in nearby daycare. Their older children have the school supplies they need, and they get to treat themselves to a local shopping trip now and then. Everyone wins. Small businesses have a sustainable increase in income. They have more employees to fill out their schedules. Our air is protected because people won't have to drive as much, and neighbors will be working with neighbors, and you can make a difference. In two thousand and nineteen, Colorado saw the need for communities to keep pace with the rising cost of living and to support the greater community. And now, six years later, the need is greater than ever. If we put more money into the pockets of local residents, they will spend here, live here, and thrive here. The facts tell the story. For one single person with no children to live in this county, they need to make a minimum of twenty-four dollars an hour. The state minimum is currently ten dollars an hour below that. What if they want a family, a house, more than a bedroom? What if they want a life? Could you live on fourteen dollars and eighty-one cents an hour? Could you pay your mortgage or rent, buy your groceries and essential supplies, go out to eat now and then, have transportation or afford recreation making that much? Fourteen dollars and eighty-one cents. Probably not. I couldn't. Be the representatives we voted you in office to be, people who understand that we depend on each other to do the right thing. And thank you for your time.
Tom. Would uh, would you tee up Robin, please?
Robin, if you could unmute your microphone, you can speak.
Hi, good afternoon.
I'll go ahead and advance the slides for you. Just tell me next slide, please.
That's okay. I don't have any slides. I had thought Barbara was going next, but maybe she wasn't available. I will. She just went. Okay, sorry about that. Um, my apologies. Robin Kneec, um, and I'm here this afternoon coming to you as a former elected who sat in the seat you sat in, who had a community of stakeholders who came to me and shared similar concerns to what you just heard about the ability of individuals to live in their community and to stay in their community. And in particular, um, I, you know, I would imagine you're in the same boat. There's a lot of focus on housing crisis. But when we look at the cost of housing, the reason it becomes such a burden is because for our moderate income families, the wages have not kept pace. And so we, as elected officials, got put under a lot of pressure to solve housing, make housing less expensive. And we've used, like, you have many of the tools to try to do that and to try to deploy important housing solutions. But if we don't address this income part of the spectrum, right, then we're missing an opportunity to tackle it from a different direction. And we were seeing folks who had been in our communities for generations moving out and losing some of the character of our communities. And so I know that this is something you're probably struggling with in Durango, too. I just wanted to talk with you more informally about some of the the ways that I think we, as decision makers, get put into situations where we're forced to kind of hear the data, and it becomes this war of data. And so that's going to happen. You know, it happened in your last session. It's going to happen today. And I want to give you an analogy. You know, in climate change, they will, there will people who say there are two sides to the debate, and there will be a study that says climate change isn't happening, and it's just a normal effect of, you know, cycles in the weather. But there is a predominance of evidence. There's a whole set of of evidence, and there's also lived experience that demonstrates that climate change is real, that we need to take action, all of that stuff. So there may be what we call dueling studies, but there is a preponderance of the evidence on one side. One of the main conversations we faced in Denver, and I know that you're already in, is this question of what's going to happen to your business community if and when the minimum wage passes? And you're going to get walked through some of the details. But I want to share with you this perspective that there have been increases in minimum wages for more than three decades in more than five dozen cities. And the evidence, the preponderance of the evidence is very clear that your economy will be okay, that there will be the same or similar number of jobs in the sectors at the, at the scale of your entire community. Where it becomes more difficult for us as decision makers is the question of one particular business. One, I, we as policymakers, right, do our best to make a decision for our entire community. And that means we can't always predict the policy outcome. If you put in a bike lane and its impact, you know, generally speaking, business will be okay, but there may be one business that has a different impact. The same thing can be true for minimum wage. You might have one or two businesses who do have struggles, and they are telling you the truth when they describe the impact it might have on their business, while at the same time, overall, businesses will thrive. Employment will thrive, and that is occurring in Denver. It's occurring in other communities across the country that have been raising the minimum wage. And so one of the things that I'm I'm asking you as a fellow policymaker to weigh is this question of, you know, making the decision for the greater community and then doing our best to make a decision that mitigates or takes steps to help protect those along the way who might be impacted. And so you have a lot of tools. In Denver, some of the tools we really debated were the pace of the change. We came out with a proposal. There was a great desire from our stakeholders to get to fifteen dollars as quickly as possible, but we actually took feedback and we slowed the steps. So we created three steps instead of two, and we made them slightly smaller. You have a lot of control and influence over the way that you might approach this, and I just want to encourage you to think about that as an opportunity. We had really thoughtful conversations about what were some of the other challenges businesses were facing when, you know, some of them were not necessarily about the wage. It was about the permitting timeline or other topics. So so these are ways that you can think about the conversation as a both and, right? That, you know, decisions we make, we have to make at the community-wide level, but there can be ways that we build them out with listening to stakeholders and making it thoughtful. So you have a lot of flexibility there. Um, I want to just be available for a lot of questions. I will say that one of the things we did was to really have a combination of community conversations and conversations in our chambers, right? It's important to have a combination of both. Um, and that, you know, legislation outlines the specific stakeholder groups that you're required to reach out to. And I think you've had many of them in these hearings, but I can certainly answer any questions about how we had some of those conversations. Um, and I, I think that, you know, as I, as I, as I close, I will just say that one of the things that I think has been most impactful in the wage impacts that we've seen here in Denver is just the ability of workers to get closer to that cost of living. Maybe being able to get rid of the third job in maybe, you know, or even the second job and focus on one job. The quality of life stories that are coming from workers who have had these wage increases has been really powerful over the five years. It has reduced child poverty. It has really disproportionately impacted women and, you know, many of whom are single parents, as well as communities of color in our city, who were some of the communities facing the pressure for displacement. So those are some of the reasons that I wanted to be here today, and I'll be available for questions. Thanks so much.
Can we unmute Matt?
Matt, you can speak if you unmute your microphone.
Hi, everyone.
Matt, Matt, I'm sorry. Can we have Sophie go next, please?
Beat me to it, yes.
All right.
Sophie, I can advance your slides for you. You just let me know, uh, the next slide.
Thank you so much. Good afternoon, City Council. Can you hear me okay? Great. Um, my name is Sophie Miriam, and I am a economic and labor policy coordinator at the Colorado Fiscal Institute. CFI is a nonpartisan nonprofit, and we work to ensure that our economy supports thriving communities, resilient businesses, and financially secure workers, and we do that through research and advancing smart, evidence-based policy. And on that note, I'm here to support raising the minimum wage in Durango, not because it's fair, but as Robin and others have noted, it, this is a smart and evidence-based policy with a preponderance of economic research backing it. It's shown to support global economic growth, strengthen small businesses, among other spillover benefits like improving public and mental health and helping working families keep up with the rising cost of living. Next slide, please. Uh, as mentioned, there are a lot of spillover benefits here that lead to really shared long-term economic prosperity because when done thoughtfully and through small predictable increases in the wage index to inflation, this policy can strengthen local economies, boost consumer demand, and really build a more resilient workforce along into the future. For example, it can reduce suicide rates, improving public health through reducing child abuse and teenage pregnancy. We see less crime in areas with higher minimum wages. So these are just a few of the examples about why the raising wages is is really pro-growth and and pro-shared economic prosperity. Next slide, please. Raising wages, as I mentioned, is also, uh, it's pro-economic growth, meaning that it can be pro-business. There's a lot of concerns that you hear in the ether about job losses or small business closures. These often surface during these these conversations, and, you know, well-understood why those would be concerned. We all want that our our local businesses to stay, to stay in business and thriving. But decades of peer-reviewed research, both nationally and right here in Colorado, show that these fears don't simply don't match the data. Studies consistently find no consistent evidence of job losses, especially in small business-heavy areas. We also see that gradual, as I mentioned, gradual inflation tide increases are quite manageable and give businesses time to plan. And employers actually benefit from more predictable labor costs as well. Not to mention, uh, raising wages addresses those community-wide challenges like housing instability, evictions, debt, and reliance on public assistance, all these things that increase stress and reduce workforce stability. Ultimately, those things are costing the city and its taxpayers more, and they're making it harder to recruit and retain an effective and efficient workforce. Uh, next slide, please. Um, so yeah, again, this this helps businesses too because higher wages are not just a cost. They're also an investment, and wages just aren't keeping up in a way that ensures high productivity, morale, and customer service. So right now, we know that also these minimum wage workers, not only are they not earning enough, but they're often folks who face disproportionate barriers to prosperity. Right now, a full-time minimum wage worker in Durango spends about seventy percent of their paycheck just on housing. So that's twenty-eight of every forty hours worked. As mentioned, that is just not sustainable. Um, and this financial strain is leading to burnout, absenteeism, high turnover, challenges that directly impact local businesses, and impact disproportionately lower-wage workers, um, and the folks noted on this slide. So the idea that minimum wage workers are mostly teens in part-type jobs is a myth. We know that most minimum wage workers are adults, many supporting families. Sixty-seven percent of waitstaff, seventy percent of cashiers, and ninety percent of childcare workers are women, and those are disproportionately low-wage, high, high percentage minimum wage professions. Roughly four in ten low-wage workers are people of color, and often those low-wage workers are, again, earning about minimum wage or near it or would be impacted by this policy change. And about thirty-seven percent of immigrant workers earn less than thirty-seven thousand eight hundred a year, which is close to minimum wage compared to twenty-five percent of US-born workers. So these aren't side gigs. These are critical sources of household income. Next slide, please. Um, and this policy, again, supports folks who are then supporting their families. It's not just college kids. And even when it is, they're, they're really providing critical, critical income to their, for their households' economic stability. Um, and so raising the wage really helps prevent financial strain for entire families. Um, and it supports the workers who keep our economy running, but are really most vulnerable to rising costs and wage stagnation. Because again, we're, we're investing in lower turnover, reduced rehiring costs, improved productivity, morale, and customer service. And then in turn, those workers earn more, they spend more. Right there in Durango, we're going to see, it's very likely from the evidence that we're going to see increased local spending by those workers because they're going to have more money in their pockets to buy the essentials. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, yeah, so this is just touching on that piece around young workers that I think even when we hear that talking point of, oh, it's just young people, well, these young people are struggling now more than ever. And while disproportionately they are concentrated in these low-wage jobs, we know that the the cost of living is is increasingly high for them. Next slide. Uh, just diving into a little bit of the academic literature on the minimum wage. I know you heard in the last session a bit from Professor Peach on this, but I just wanted to touch on some of the national and local literature. Last session, this study was referenced on Boulder County and Epi. and EPI study found that 93% of low-wage workers would benefit from their minimum wage increase, even under conservative assumptions. Um, and I, this is, you know, this study, some of the, some pieces from this study did, uh, overblow the job impacts. Whereas we know from meta-analyses, which are basically an analyses of many different studies, peer-reviewed studies over years, um, is a summary, an average, what have you. The meta-analysis of 37 studies over 15 years showed no negative impact on jobs. Um, and in Emeryville, California, I looked for a city that was roughly the same size as Durango. Um, some research, recent research there found no job losses, no major price hikes, and in fact, an 18% wage increase. So lots of benefits there for, for even small cities. Um, and then top economists on this, Aaron Dub and Ben Zipper are two of the, the top economists nationally. Um, their most recent research has really confirmed, again, that the impact on employment is essentially zero, even for small businesses. Um, because businesses can and do adapt. Next slide. Uh, businesses around the country really have been able to adapt to higher wages and many have thrived through, you know, reducing their turnover, reducing those training costs. Um, and any price increases that we do see, um, even for small businesses, it's often small on a one-time basis and it's outweighed by the increased consumer demand. Um, next slide, please. Um, so, so businesses really are able to adapt and benefit because, uh, to quote one researcher at the bottom of this slide, it kills job vacancies, not jobs. Um, and turnover rates go down. Next slide. Thank you. And then this is just a little bit on that price increase. I know inflation is a big concern right now, but it's important to note, especially from this recent, uh, UC Berkeley research. Um, they found that it's 15 cents on a $4 hamburger and that's a small trade-off to make when you have vastly improved workforce outcomes, much higher consumer demand. And in fact, that translates often for, for employers, um, and, and restaurants in particular to increase revenue. Um, so in conclusion, uh, by indexing the wage to inflation and raising the wage substantially for workers. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, businesses can gain predictably instability. Workers are able to keep up with the rising cost of living and the whole community is able to benefit, um, from that stronger consumer demand, healthier households, more financial stability that then solves a lot of those, those big social problems that, that all cities face. And as Robin noted, this isn't a leap into the unknown. It's a well-tested approach that's been used across the country and it's backed by real-world data and rigorous research. Uh, thank you so much for your time and your leadership. And I really urge you to move forward with this responsible policy, not just because it's good for workers, right? But because as I've shown, it's really something that benefits businesses, employers, public health, and Durango's long-term prosperity. Thank you.
Tom, will you unmute Matt?
Are you able to hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you, Matt.
And I'll go ahead and advance your slides for you as, as you indicate.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Um, good afternoon, City Council. Thank you for having us today. I'll give you just a little bit of an introduction on me so you don't feel like a complete stranger is talking to you. Um, my name is Dr. Matthew Fritzmauer. I have a PhD in criminology, law, and society. All of my academic research and writing is on poverty, government policies that can address poverty and the effects that poverty has on people's lives. And in particular, my work focuses on low-wage workers. So I fell off the academic track and became the Executive Director of the Denver Labor Division of the Denver Auditor's Office. A lot of what we do at Denver Labor is minimum wage education and stakeholding and also sometimes enforcement. You can advance the slide, please. Thank you. So as Councilmember Knich mentioned, Denver actually became the first jurisdiction in Colorado to pass its own local minimum wage, which went into effect on January 1st, 2020. Now, every single employee performing work in Denver must be paid at least $18.81 per hour in 2025, although tipped food and beverage workers like servers, bartenders, bussers, the like, they can be paid $3.02 less than that, so long as they earn at least that much in tips every hour. So there is a break for that sector there. Um, Denver City Council did something really smart, really intuitive, uh, yet something that Congress, for example, has never done, which is they, they, as Councilmember Knich mentioned, set three-step increases and then thereafter tied Denver's minimum wage to cost of living increases. And so as prices go up, the minimum wage also goes up. And this ensures that our city's lowest-wage workers don't get left behind by inflation. You can advance the slide. Thank you. So here is a chart showing how our minimum wage has increased over time. Um, so 2020, 2021, and 2022, those rates were set in statute. So there was a three-year look-forward period, provided a lot of clarity. People could understand what was coming and how to prepare for it. And I think that was really helpful from talking to different businesses and stakeholders. Beginning in 2023 is when the minimum wage started to go up based on the Consumer Price Index. So as you all might recall, inflation was quite high for a while there. It went up to 17.29 in 2023, 18.29 in 2024. It's 18.81 now, and next year, I believe it will be right around 19.29. Our office does enforcement work, but we also do a lot of education to make sure that everyone understands exactly what the minimum wage is going to be. We answer questions, we do community events, we make sure it's really easy to comply with it. If you come to Denver towards the end of the year or the start of the year, you'll see our minimum wage advertisements on buses, sometimes billboards. You'll hear us on the radio. Please advance the slide, thank you. I want to build on some of what Sophie shared with you all about research. There is real-world research that shows what effect Denver's minimum wage has had on Denver. It's put out by the State Department of Labor and Employment, CDLE, and specifically their Division of Labor Standards and Statistics. So in 2023, they, they published a, a report which looked at Denver and the effect after the minimum wage went into effect, and also compared Denver to the rest of Colorado and to some other comparable jurisdictions. And the findings were really encouraging for the policy. From 2020 to 2022, Denver had stronger wage growth than Colorado and then other similar large counties. In 2021 and 2022, Denver's sales tax revenue increased more than Colorado and other large counties. And this was especially true for restaurants and bars. Recall that Sophie was talking about how the minimum wage drives demand, drives consumption. When people have more money, when they're less financially insecure, where research tells us is that they spend more money. The thing that they're likely to do is, in addition to going to the doctor, going to the dentist, getting a head-on bills, they go out to eat. They buy themselves things in their community. That helps the economy. And we believe that's what we're seeing in Denver as a result of the minimum wage increases. In 2021 and 2022, coming out of COVID, Denver's unemployment rate dropped more than every other comparator. And I said that this report was released in 2023. I reached out to one of the economists at CDLE who wrote it to ask if he had any updated information. And he said, "We're not releasing another report, but we did check and these findings for Denver still hold true today." So now we're four, five years past when the minimum wage went into effect. And, um, you know, without advocating for a particular policy that you all are considering, because that's not my role, we haven't seen the sky fall in Denver. And what research instead tells us about our city is that the minimum wage has put more money into the pockets of working people without hurting the economy in any measurable way that we see. I think that that is the extent of what I had for you all today, but I'm more than happy to answer any questions.
Hello, Gil DeYasi. Hey, I'm curious, on your stats there, it says 2021, 2022, Denver's sales tax revenue increased more than, um, others, especially for restaurants and bars. Okay, so you're telling me that because the wages went up, the businesses had to pay more sales tax?
I think the way I would, pardon me. The way I would frame, the way I would frame it is that as wages went up, people were purchasing more. And so the sales taxes that consumers paid increased and increased more than in the rest of Colorado. And we attribute that to people having more disposable income and purchasing more things in Denver.
And therefore, the businesses had to pay more sales tax?
I think the sales taxes passed through to the consumer. So more sales taxes were collected, reflecting more sales.
All right, thank you.
Uh, so if you guys have any questions, we can have the panel answer those questions.
Good afternoon, Council. Thank you again for hosting another study session and giving the workers of Durango an opportunity to be represented and heard. As our presenters have shown, there is plenty of misinformation and fear-mongering around raising the minimum wage, but the actual data paints a picture of increased prosperity for workers and continued success for the overwhelming majority of businesses. As a small business owner myself, I can appreciate the concerns around raising the minimum wage, but I can also appreciate the concerns around the workforce that is underpaid and unable to live where they work. An increased minimum wage that is tied to inflation is a pragmatic step in solving this problem. As a coalition, we would like to formally request that Council Director, City Manager Jose Madrigal, to take input from stakeholders for 30 days on specific scenarios for establishing a minimum wage that is higher than the states and is tied to local inflation metrics. This will include several steps to help businesses adjust over time. After 30 days, Council will have a summary and multiple scenarios to discuss before taking further input from all sectors identified in the state law and deciding how to proceed in terms of drafting an ordinance with more details. Council has requested an approach that uses a scalpel rather than a hammer. We believe this approach provides that scalpel. On behalf of local workers struggling to make ends meet, thank you again for allowing us this platform. We look forward to collaborating further in order to make Durango a place where both businesses and their employees can thrive. Thank you.
Do we have any more, um, people? Okay, you guys, do you have questions? Go ahead.
Um, can I just call? Yeah. Can I, Barb, can I have you come up and answer some questions? Since you were first, you were first. Um, I think you provide some valuable insights since you were part of HB 191210. Um, so the bill requires local governments to consult with surrounding jurisdictions and stakeholders before enacting the local minimum wage. What kind of consultation processes have you seen work effectively? And what challenges maybe have arisen from those? And if you don't know, maybe, um, Rob?
You know, I don't know very much about it. We, we passed it hoping that, um, you know, local governments had the opportunity to do it, because we didn't want to say everybody in Colorado has to do this, because that's, you can't do it that way. That's not real life. Um, and I know two cities have done it, but I haven't looked very closely at their numbers. So Robin would be able to tell you much more about that than I.
Okay, and I can, she can chime in here in a second.
Okay.
Um, do you, what mechanisms were put in place? Or what mechanisms do you believe were most effective for the state to monitor the economic impact of local minimum wage as man, ordinances by man, as mandated by the bill?
Yeah, some of that was written into that bill, um, to say that, yes, you do have to report. You do have to keep track of things. It's not just willy-nilly that, um, you just raise it and kind of go on with your life. Um, and I think what they were saying earlier, the most successful ones in those two cities at least were, um, stagnated raises. So it wasn't one day, everybody was getting one, you know, and then the next day they were getting 15% more. Um, so I do know that, um, having a little bit of increases over the time was much more effective in those two situations.
I'm struggling, because as I'm like Googling things and like trying to like figure it out, there's some, like, even, you know, Professor Peach, is that his name? Said that this study was good, and then now this study's not good from this. So it's hard to like tell.
Yeah.
What is quality data and then what? Does that make sense? Okay, so I'm, yeah, just struggling there. Um, okay, given that Durango's in your district, um, which you represented it, how did you, how did you anticipate that this bill might specifically benefit or challenge communities like Durango? Because we're different than Boulder and Denver.
Yes, you are.
Obviously, um, which have varying costs of living compared to Boulder and Denver.
Well, I think everybody looks at it from the business end of things. If we can't possibly raise, um, we can't raise to, you know, prices, we can't pay people more. But I think you forget that the people who are being paid more, if they can live here, they will spend more. And if people can afford, you can't afford a place in Durango right now. Um, I apparently am living in a million-dollar home. I didn't think that was ever a million-dollar home that I'm living in, but it is. And who could possibly afford that rent? But if you're paying people a livable wage, um, and they have a family and you have kids and they're going to school here and they're buying supplies here and they're, you know, they're doing everything here, I think you'll see the benefits of it. I think too often we look at just what the businesses are going to be going through. And that's true, and we do need to look at that. But you also need to look at what the people who are making these wages are going through, that they need, you know, they can work two or three jobs right now and still barely make it. And then they never see their families at home, because they're working two or three jobs just to live in Durango so that they don't have to travel every day in a car that doesn't work. You know, I mean, there's just, there's a lot that goes on with it. And I think, um, raising that wage and giving people the money, I don't think it's an extraordinarily amount of, of money to pay 15% of what they're making right now. You know, a couple dollars, but, um, so I just, that's kind of what I see as the, the issue. So it's not necessarily comparing us to Boulder, Denver, but it is saying that, um, we can do this because your constituents really need it. I mean, I heard about this all the time as a legislator. We can't afford to live there.
Balancing the business owner and the worker is definitely.
Let's listen to both sides of it instead of just one.
Yeah. Um, I don't know, does someone else want to jump in? So we can, if Barb's here, I have other questions.
Do you have any?
Yeah.
Did, did you want me to just really briefly address the outreach?
Sure. Yes, thank you.
Yeah, I think there's, there's, there's two different comments I would make. One is, um, that there are values at stake and then there are policy details. And sometimes having the same conversation with both of them mushed up makes it really difficult. And so, um, for example, if, if the question is, we really believe, you know, as a city council, that it's worth it to explore, um, raising the wage. What is the best way to do that? How best could we do it? What would be your interest in, you know, how do we keep enforcement costs low? Right? So it's really difficult to have the conversation at a really generic level for very long. It's much easier and more specific to kind of have the conversation, all right, here's a value. We're, we're going to take this value and then now let's discuss, how can we do this? What way would we do it? So that's one tip I would give you in your outreach. It's, it's, those are different conversations. A different question is, do we believe, you know, it's our role to help folks be able to stay and live and afford in our community through raising their wages, you know, in some level above, above the minimum? That's a values conversation. So just know which kind of outreach you're having. And then we, um, I think we did a lot of smaller focus group conversations within industry separately. Um, and that allowed folks to kind of work through and share some, some specific examples. So what would the business community's proposal be for the most, you know, reasonable or, you know, helpful schedule? Uh, maybe they'd like it to be five steps out, so it's even more predictable than three. I will just say the city of Edgewater is a much, is a very small community. I think even smaller than Durango, and they went through this process. You know, they, and, and I think that in a city manager form of government like yours, right? That's where the manager can do some of that work in terms of coming up with, here's our plan. We'll have these three conversations scheduled, um, and then we'll come back and we'll have a hearing. But, but I think having some separation of, of those two types, it's very difficult to have the conversation in the generic, because people are talking, some people in their head are thinking a $20 raise, and you might not even have that on the table for a decade, you know? So it's really helpful to get a little more specific, to have people to react to something about how. Just a thought.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Kip. Do you have some questions?
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I'm not sure who to address it to. The, the question, the biggest question that I've got is as we are talking about that prices did not go up very high, wages do go up, where is the revenue coming from to support those wages then? It's either i- i- is it coming out of the profits that the business is making? Or is there substantially increase in business for whatever reasons that the business owner is able to absorb that? I'm not sure who can answer that question. Did I stump the panel?
I mean, the research I've read, it's primarily through greater retention. If you think about the loss of an employee and what it costs you in recruitment training, where you have two people working a shift instead of one, that retention is a big place where businesses save money versus, you know, having a lot of turnover. Some of your service industries, Durango is a big tourism town, right? So you have folks who are doing cleaning and you have folks who are doing service jobs. Um, and so those types of jobs tend to turn over more quickly where you don't have a higher wage floor. But Sophie should chime in.
And then for other municipalities, have we seen any, the range of jump in the wage related to it being tied to inflation? Have we seen a substantial range or does it, is it typically three stages, $2 raises up to a, a minimum? Is there any consistency between how each municipality has done it?
Um, I can cover the first question first. Uh, I think Robert did a great job, or Councilwoman Kenee Schreder. The turnover piece is, is, is one of the most cited, but there is also strong evidence. I'm looking at one of the foremost cited MIT studies on the local aggregate effects of minimum wage increases, which I'm happy to follow up with, which found it, prices increase modestly, but so does nominal spending. Um, and I've, I've read a good deal of research showing that, yes, exactly what you said, the, it, it both and, like, consumer spending increases. So yeah, people are spending money in this study specifically found, like, certain subcategories of goods are what people spend more on. I think Matt got at this, like, food away from home, um, especially in locations where low wage workers account for a larger share of employment. People are spending that money outside the home. That means, yeah, more businesses for their restaurants. And then I've seen, uh, I can't remember the name of the study off the top of my head, but a couple, a couple pieces of research recently finding that, uh, the, the, there is a nominal price increase, yes. As I mentioned, it's pretty small compared to, to those other benefits. And that the, uh, small businesses especially are able to pass that price increase onto consumers. It doesn't really hit consumers that hard, but they do see a small increase in, in their revenue. Um, and then not to mention a decrease in turnover cost. Um, I think I got to at least the first part of that question.
And then I'll just, just a little bit to add on to, just based on my own experience and, and looking at these issues across the country. It, it really varies. Typically jurisdictions will put into a statute a series of wage increases that are set. So you have that on ramp, you, you have that clear signal, everyone knows what to expect. And then more and more frequently, they will tie it to the Consumer Price Index or inflation or some other measure of cost of living. I think the great thing about the law in Colorado is that it preserves local control and you all have flexibility to do the stakeholding you want to do to figure out what, if anything, works best for Durango.
I'll just give you a couple of examples. Denver did three steps before going to the Consumer Price Index. The city of Edgewater has done five steps. So, um, through, I think, 2026, um, based on when they passed it. Boulder County actually did steps all the way through 2030 so that people could plan all the way through 2030. So I haven't counted, but I think that's something like six or seven specific steps before they went to the CPI. So I would say, um, the minimum is two to three steps, but you see the maximum going all the way, you know, up to six and seven years out, are the differences in Colorado that I'm familiar with.
And I'll chime in, I'll just speak, I can only speak specifically to, um, the construction side of things, which we all know is not hurting for cash flow. But for us, knowing that we, we pay our employees above market rate and above what most other people doing the same thing are doing, the, it kind of ties back to the employee retention that we have a more predictable product. We have more familiarity with people we work with. It's, we can drum up more business because people know what they're getting with us. And I, I think that would translate to other things, but I won't speak for them. But I can tell you that that's, that's where it pays off for us and increase in revenue is that we have, people know what they're getting and we have, we're sharpening the same tool over and over. We're teaching the same people, the same skill over and over and new skills piggybacking off of what they've learned before, rather than trying to cycle someone new and, and start back over. But again, that's strictly the construction side of things. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. Um, I had, um, a question regarding, was there any data pulled regarding with minimum wage increases? Did that lead to more or less, um, raises? And then what also did that do with potential promotions? But then, maybe it's by sector or through other, um, other jobs in general, but did that, did there, was there a noticeable impact to, any sort of raises or promotions or anything like that, that, that anybody saw through any of the data?
Uh, I wanted to share the fact that, you know, one of the things that you will see, and it isn't intended, it sometimes gets described as an unintended effect, but it's actually an intended effect of raising the minimum wage is, is something called compression raises. So, you know, if you raise the wage of the lowest for paid parks and recreation worker, for example, let's just say, um, in your city, you probably have some of them on your staff, right? Then the supervisor who makes just above that, you will need to raise their wage a little bit too because you want the supervisor to appropriately be more skilled and experienced and, and making the difference of what their wage earns. So you do see, um, we have, we have seen that effect in, um, public jobs that the city, you know, controls and has the data on. So, so that's why I use the park and rec example. It's certainly been reported anecdotally, um, from businesses in the community. And I think that, um, you know, that is an intended effect, which is that you're raising the boat for, for workers at the bottom of the scale, generally speaking. So as the bottom of the scale moves up, the, the, the rung just above the bottom moves up a little bit too. And those workers, many of them were also struggling with housing affordability, also struggling with childcare and some of the challenges. So, so that is, and, and I will just say one other, um, thing that's been reported, and this kind of goes to the construction example, is the competitive advantage or disadvantage. So if you have community, if you have employers in your community who are already paying more than minimum wage because they have to, to attract workers, the challenge they face is being undercut by competitor businesses who are charging less because they pay their workers less. And it's really not a good reflection of the true market. And so one of the things that you can see is some breath of relief saying, okay, I, I at least will not be undercut. I've already been doing the right thing, but I don't want to be undercut anymore. So, so I think those are the ways that raises have been discussed, um, in some of the, the conversations, both anecdotally and then the data at the city about those, those first tier of workers above minimum wage.
Great, thank you.
Well, thank you, everyone, for coming and allowing us to hear some of your feedback. Um, you know, my concern and my request from the city manager and my colleagues is to start at the city. We know that the city is one of the largest employers in our area. And the city doesn't start all of their employees at $17 an hour. I think we have the state minimum, but we could also raise our wages. Uh, Robin mentioned, mentioned the issue of compression and that's something that we'll have to address in our budget. When we start talking about that in October, uh, it's a request that I will make, that we increase that salary to $17 an hour for all city employees. 750 people, uh, roughly, are, um, is the staff. I suspect most of them are over there and with them, they pay quite high wages. But really start there and in the public sector to request that all of them at least start at $17 an hour. So, um, as a small business owner myself, um, it's not the wage increase that is a concern. Uh, as speaking for myself, um, and even in some of the people that are in small business sector development like Local First and the Chambers and, and the Economic Development Alliance. It's that there are multiple pressures. And so the wage issue, you know, all of us are paying at least $14.81. And so there is increases in rent, increases, um, in insurance, increases in everything that a small business has to go through. And really in my conversations with small business owners, we're all struggling. You know, we, we are struggling to make ends meet, just like every family is. So, um, I just, I suggest that we start in-house with our own city. As we, as counselors, we approve the budget and we can approve that increase.
If just questions we choose.
Um, so I will like to start with there. Uh, I'll start in that, um, with that effort to increase wages in-house.
I have one more quick question. Sorry, is that okay? I, um, Robin, if you, or yes, Robin. Do you know, how is Denver monitored the impact on small businesses specifically? And did you guys have any programs or support systems put in place to help them adapt? Because that's where we're getting the biggest pushback, I think, and like concern from.
What I don't recommend is raising the minimum wage, um, three months before worldwide pandemic hits. That's, we passed our increase, we passed our increase in 19 and it got implemented in January 1st of 2020. So I will say that, um, many of the types of things that we might have been monitoring were just, it was a different world for, you know, pretty much two years. So I think it's really difficult. Our example is probably not a good one in that regard because we just, we couldn't, it's hard to separate. But I will say the state study did a really good job trying to separate out those impacts and control for them. But one of the things that has been monitored, you know, and, and debated is, is restaurant openings and closures. And so, um, the restaurant industry has churned. It has always churned with up, uptakes and downtakes in the economy. As the, as the last council member mentioned, they are facing multiple insurance and other things. But, so we do see a number of people citing data about restaurant closures, but the city's data system actually changed in the middle of, um, this five-year period since the wage has been in place. And so you can't compare apples to apples because of how things are counted. But once you control for that, um, the, the excise and license department, which is what does restaurant, um, data in the city, has been very clear that they do, they see new restaurants opening. So the net number of restaurants, right, remains quite high per capita, right? We might have had, um, a boom where there were maybe more restaurants than the city could bear, you know, more restaurants than there were customers to support. There's so many things to control for, right? In terms of what is the environment for a particular piece of business? But that's one piece of data that's been hotly debated. And the data keepers are very clear that there are as many openings as there have been closures. So the changeover is happening, but there's certainly newer businesses. So that's, that's one area I think that you might read about or hear about. I, I would defer to Matt if he's aware of any other data.
Yeah, happy to speak on that. Thank you. The Bureau of Labor Statistics releases something we all call the QCEW dataset, Quarterly Census on Employment and Wages. You can see why we call it QCW. It tracks a number of establishments in an area by industry. And what that, it's considered the gold standard of that kind of data. And what it shows is that over the last five years, um, from 2019 to, I think we have data through mid 2024, the number of restaurants and other businesses in Denver have steadily grown over time. So actually, on balance, more openings than closings. In terms of what, what we do, what we found to be successful for small businesses, we have a whole webpage called Small Business Resources that has information for small businesses. We create infographics, we do training, outreach, education. We have a number of, um, like video series that we participate in and put out. We have something that airs on Wednesdays on Facebook Live. We have something that airs on Channel 8. And we, most importantly, answer the phone and answer emails. In the city and county of Denver, if you're a business and you have questions about the minimum wage, you can't do better than to call our office. So we just try to make the policy as transparent and accessible to as many people as we possibly can.
All right, it looks like there's a number of questions, so thank you. Could we move on to the next item?
Uh, certainly. The next item is a presentation on optimizing the Mayor's Youth Advisory Commission.
Mayor and Council, good afternoon. My name is Ben Florine, Chief Deputy Clerk in the City Clerk's Office. And, uh, this is an update on the Mayor's Youth Advisory Commission, supporting engaged and collaborative governance in our strategic plan goals. And, uh, this is a timely update just because we're getting towards the end of summer. And, um, we're currently soliciting applications for, uh, the Mayor's Youth Advisory Program for this year. So I wanted to bring this update to you at a study session. Uh, so first I'll just give you a brief narrative of, of, uh, the Mayor's Youth Advisory Commission, or MIAC as the acronym. So MIAC is Durango's official youth governance board that was created in 2010. And it's available for area high schoolers to participate and be involved in. So MIAC was actually created as a response to the Children, Youth and Family Master Plan, which was developed with other municipalities in the area like, uh, Bayfield, Ignacio, and I believe Mankas as well. And so the city adopted the Children, Youth and Mastery, uh, Master Family Plan, uh, which affirmed that families and children are of primary importance of, in furtherance of policy, infrastructure and services. So that was in 2009. So to bolster those efforts, MIAC was created in 2010 and adopted via resolution, uh, in which the city committed to creating meaningful youth involvement, fostering greater understanding of youth concerns and contributions, uh, developing citizenship skills and encouraging greater youth participation in community issues. So moving on, I just want to talk about the current program a little bit and, uh, some staff observations. So our current program or last year's program, uh, which wrapped up in May, we had 10 participants. And last year's program was heavily focused on, uh, the teens developing, uh, projects and programs and events, oftentimes with partnerships both internal and external. So some of their events and programs, um, were partnerships with internal groups like the library, police department, uh, parks and recreation. And then oftentimes they'll partner with external groups like nonprofits, uh, Durango Trails, Cowboy Poetry Gathering, and, uh, support their efforts. So with that said, this past year, there were some observed challenges. So with our 10 members last year, uh, many of the meetings and events and programs, uh, were sparsely attended. These teens are very busy, they're very dynamic. So they're often competing, or, uh, the Mayor's Youth Advisory Commission can often compete with their other extracurriculars. A lot of times they're involved in sports, um, uh, testing periods or they're out of town for these, for these items. So, uh, at our meetings, we had about 60% attendance last year. And then at our programs and events, we had about 40% attendance. So with all that said, it can, uh, it can sometimes be challenging to advance projects. There can be excessive follow-up from staff and sometimes it can be burdensome, burdensome to assist the teens in moving their projects across the finish line. We don't really like getting into territory where we're helping manage, uh, manage the projects for the teens when they're not available. So these are some of the observed challenges that we had last year. And in the end, it can be difficult with this baseline for MIAC to host their programs and events, get the attention of area youth and teens, and then leverage that into larger initiative, uh, youth initiatives that the city would like to pursue and support youth on. But either way, we do have a plan to address, uh, some of these items soon with the teens. So, um, what we want to do early in the program, uh, in the first couple of meetings is meet with the group and get their feedback and set some expectations on how the program can be more successful and, um, you know, run well this year. We want to ensure the initial intent and impact of the program is maintained. And we also want to mitigate some of the staff concerns and challenges. So we're going to meet with the teens, once we have a board in place, and get their suggestions. So, you know, we'll talk about things we can do to create more structure and accountability. Some of their suggestions might involve working more directly with council to develop initiatives, maybe more reoccurring meetings with the, with the teen board. But either way, we'll solicit that information from the teens and get back to you guys with that info. But either way, I think it will allow us to have a more successful program this year and in turn leverage that larger audience based on MIAC's work to support larger community initiatives. But that's pretty much it. It's just a short and sweet presentation. We currently have applications open for MIAC. And once we get enough applicants to place them on the board, we'll route their information to you and then have it up for consideration to place them on the board via resolution. Hopefully sometime in September here. But with that said, I'd be open to any comments or questions, anything of concern.
Thank you, Ben. Of course, I attended a few of the meetings before school was out. But my question is, is only at Durango High School or can it go to the other high schools too?
It's in our resolution that it can be, we left it any area high school students. So we basically see interest from Animas High School, mainly DHS, but really, or truly, any, any teenager of age to be in high school, even if they're homeschooled.
Ben, thanks for the work on this. Have we done much in regards to coordinating with other nonprofits that serve the same age population? And what is the age that we're looking at?
Yes, so this is high schoolers, so it's generally about fourteen to eighteen. We haven't had many direct connections, at least in the past few years, with some of like the teen-based nonprofits, like such as The Hive and stuff like that. Some of our nonprofit partnerships, the past few years specifically, we really helped out Cowboy Poetry Gathering with their art and poetry contests for elementary school kids. So they're generally nonprofits that have a youth thirteen angle, to give some context to that.
And is there any recruitment from those nonprofits as well as any support in organizing it throughout the year?
We, we try to do that. We try to stay connected with those nonprofits. I don't think that we've done much marketing through those nonprofits for more MIAC members right now. We're kind of leaning on Durango P I O and our own word of mouth currently. But there's always resources to leverage to try to build that bigger group.
And last question, is there a nonprofit that comes to mind that might do a, do, this might fit more with their mission to run the Mayor's Youth Advisory Council in a support format? I mean, working with city staff, obviously, it's the mayor's council. But it seems to me like we've got some expertise in those areas out there.
Exactly, yeah. We are constantly trying to look at who might, you know, instead of reinventing the wheel, look at those existing youth councils and youth leadership groups. Again, the past few years, we haven't done as much of that, but I'm kind of hoping to get some, well, again, once I can meet with the teens, like, you know, what groups are you guys working with? What are, what is, what are youth and teens excited about outside of school right now with some of these other teen-based nonprofits? But again, like you're saying, really try to tie in existing youth councils, leadership groups that are already in place. So unfortunately, I guess I'm just not embedded enough in the community, or at least with youth and teens outside of MIAC. So we're really hoping to solicit the teens for that info and get their ideas.
Well, it's, it's a tough job giving teens a voice, so thank you.
Thank you. Do we, does the city of Durango have an internship program for youth?
I don't, I don't know that I could speak to it thoroughly. We, I know that there, the city has internships probably through HR, but I'm not sure if it extends down to what age and to what capacity.
We do have internships. It's not an established program, but there are various departments in our organization that do internships.
Okay, is that, I don't know, it's just, I, I, something that I perhaps could evolve into something like that, more of an internship program, perhaps? I don't know, it's just a thought. And I guess the other question, you mentioned like a leadership program, or I imagine this is like a leadership program, something like a, the one that the Chamber hosts. Is, is it perhaps, has something like that been attempted?
And I'll admit, I'm, I'm actually not too familiar if there's a youth leadership. Oh, okay.
Yes, but I mean, a similar model for, has that been explored?
I'm not, no. But I, I know that those groups are out there and I think that's something that we would a hundred percent be open to exploring just to maintain the, the integrity and the initial intent of the program.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ben. So do you want anything from city council, like support or attendance or suggestions how to go forward? Or should we just be flexible with what you come up with? Because I know recruitment for that age bracket is really tough.
It can be. Yeah, I think, I appreciate council support. I think what I want to do is get the board established and meet with the teens and hopefully come back and have a meeting with you guys as a council to really explore some of these ideas based off the feedback and maybe see what, what type of new turn or new angle we can implement with the board this year. Do things a little different aside from just kind of independent or group projects, but really tie them into, into the work of council and having your guys' direct work support there, so.
All righty, well, thank you, Ben.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the Aviation Department update.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Tony Vicary, Aviation Director at the Durango La Plata County Airport, here to provide a brief update on airport operations as we move through the summer. So a quick run-through on airport activity. These statistics are all through June, so the halfway point in the year. We're still finalizing July statistics and should have those wrapped up in the next week or so. So through June, airline deployments or passenger traffic is up a robust eleven percent. So continuing to see very strong demand. Preliminary July numbers are likely to actually exceed that figure, continuing the strong growth trend we've seen so far this year. That comes on only a five percent increase in airline seat capacity. So we're seeing more seats on aircraft filled, indicative of strong demand into the market. Our load factors, which is the percent of those seats filled, are currently running at record-breaking levels, approaching eighty-four percent. Our airport has never seen that, at least in the last fifteen to twenty years of recorded record. So continuing to see very strong demand on the traffic front. If you look through the remainder of the statistics, you can see in most cases, they're running in similarly positive territory. Everything from concession sales within the terminal to aircraft fuel sales, rental car contract days, parking, et cetera. Taking a little closer look at the airline passenger numbers, you can see that the blue bar of two thousand and twenty-five continues to exceed our two thousand and twenty-four levels. We're on pace to easily pass the five hundred and fifty thousand employment or total passenger number this year in two thousand and twenty-five, that would establish a new record at DRO. In terms of airline route network, our route network here in August can consist of six daily flights to Denver on United, as well as one daily flight to Houston. That summer seasonal Houston service does wrap up on the eighteenth of August. So we have about two weeks remaining in that. As a reminder, this is the first summer we've seen daily service into the Houston market here in Durango. We just got the July numbers today. They came in extraordinarily strong. We averaged close to an eighty-eight percent load factor over the course of the entire month, which is an extremely strong figure for any service, let alone new entrant service. Albeit, it does come in the strongest month of demand of the year for us in the July timeframe, which is intentional by United, but nevertheless, that's extremely strong performance and continues to build a good case for us as we work with United on an ongoing basis around developing that route towards our ultimate goal of year-round service into the market. So strong performance so far. On the American side, continue to offer four to five daily flights to Dallas-Fort Worth and three daily to Phoenix. Here in September, we'll see a two-month period of American leaning into larger aircraft. So following the lead of United, as they've taken the last two years, American will be introducing larger Airbus mainline aircraft into the market on two of their daily Dallas frequencies for the months of September and October. Those will be essentially trial months as they look to see how the performance on those larger aircraft vets out. If it's something comparable, comparable to what United has seen in the sense of ongoing strong demand and zero issues in terms of filling that larger capacity, it bodes well for us in terms of moving into a larger gauge of aircraft into the future on the American side to complement what we're seeing on the United side over the last several years. In terms of projects, do a quick rundown here. Our largest project, which is Phase One B of the Terminal Expansion Project, continues to move along well. We have a formal ribbon cutting scheduled for the first sub-phase of that project next Tuesday. Council is invited to attend that and hope to see you there. So this will be a formal opening at that point. Within a handful of days after the ribbon cutting, we'll open the space to the public and make another shift in phasing over to, as we continue the project. As a reminder, although we are cutting a ribbon, this is not the completion of the project. We still have quite a ways to go. The project is heavily phased as we open pieces of new portions of the terminal, but still allow for ongoing operations at the airport. So we'll be breaking ground on the next sub-phase within the next week or two after we open this piece. So excited to open this next chunk, but acknowledge that the project will run all the way through two thousand and twenty-six and potentially into early twenty-seven as we wrap up some, some lingering pieces on the project. A couple of other notes here. Our white wastewater system upgrade project is moving along swiftly. We're currently estimating completion in September on a large two million dollar upgrade to that facility at the airport. And our parking lot expansion Phase Two project is substantially complete. We opened a hundred and fifty new paved parking spaces in the month of July. Those are now open and accessible to the public. So happy to have that added capacity in the lots. We now have almost exactly thirteen hundred total parking spaces at the airport, which is a, quite an incredible number of overall parking spaces. And then you can see the rest of our projects, I won't go through these line by line. Happy to take any questions at the end if there's any specifics. But we remain on schedule with the, the full slate of capital projects. We have quite a number of which that will be wrapping up construction in the next sixty to ninety days here as we move through the, the back end of the construction season. But I touched, touched on the larger projects. And then just to wrap up, a couple of visuals, kind of a sneak peek a little bit on the future baggage claim and arrivals area that you'll see if you're able to attend on Tuesday or if you fly through the airport in the subsequent days thereafter. So you can see some of the new baggage claim areas. You get a little bit of a hint of some of the local art installations that we have that are included within this, all intended to convey a better sense of place with Durango and Southwest Colorado out of the airport. And then lastly, just a couple of shots of the, the expanded parking areas at the airport. I mentioned we added a hundred and fifty new paved parking spaces in the month of July. This is in our main parking lot as opposed to our self-parking lot, which we expanded and paved last year. So continuing to make improvements on that front, acknowledging that the terminal needs expansion, but the parking lots have to go lockstep in that same level of development. And with that, I would take any questions there may be.
Tony, a clarification. So I think we, we had a high of twenty-five thousand passengers and you just said we were potentially up to thirty-five thousand in this.
You were referencing in the month of July or?
Sorry, the graph, page three of eight, airport passenger traffic?
Yes, here.
Just wanted to understand this better. So the, the peak in two thousand and twenty-four was around twenty-five thousand? And did you say we're potentially hitting thirty-five thousand this year?
No, it won't be quite that high. We're on track to be about twelve to fifteen percent ahead of that number, which doing some quick math would put us potentially knocking on the thirty thousand range for the month of July.
Thanks, I knew I kind of, I thought I heard that wrong. And then the only question I had for you is, the parking lots are fantastic. They filled up quickly and I ended up parking a, a, a long way away. But there's just no shade. And in particular, in August and July, it seemed like we've got an awful lot of asphalt and concrete without anything to kind of break that up. Is there any plans to add some?
Good question. No near-term plans for, for covered parking. It's been something that's been discussed, at least loosely at the airport. You know, job one was to ensure we physically had enough surface parking to accommodate the demand, which we're continuing to work through. Covered parking can be an ongoing conversation for us. Typically, what you'll see is airports use that to segment out premium parking that might be covered. Ideally, in a perfect world, you can couple that potentially with, with covered solar to be able to generate electrical opportunities associated with that. That ties into a little bit of a longer conversation around L P E A's ability to accept reverse feed onto the grid, which has been a kind of an ongoing conversation we have with them. So short answer is nothing in the near term. And then the slightly longer answer would be open to those conversations as we continue to look at options in the future.
Yeah, we left out one thing, trees. Is there any way to, any conversations about breaking just all of the asphalt and concrete up with some greenery?
Not much. Basically, we are site constrained. We have a significant topographic fall-off to the west of us, to the Florida River Valley. And then we're pinched down to the east because of our airfield. And so we're really in the mode of trying to maximize available square footage to develop at the airport. And unfortunately, it doesn't just leave a lot of room for, you know, additional aesthetics as we're trying to incorporate that on the long run. So we do our best to maintain landscaping and the ability to create some visual aspects. But there's just somewhat minimal opportunities if we want to try to maintain the available square footage, which has some severe limitations.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Tony. Excellent report.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the city grants update.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Tommy Crosby, Economic Opportunity Manager. I'm here to provide an update on our most recent round of Lodger's Tax Local Event Marketing Grants and the Durango Creates Grants. Both of these grants face their second round this past month. On tonight's regular council agenda, under the consent agenda, both grant programs are up for projects being recommended. Hopefully, you're getting accustomed to kind of this rhythm of our grant cycles. We try to get on each study session agenda to be able to answer any questions that council might have about the grant programs that are on the regular schedule. Today's focus is, again, the Lodger's Tax Local Event Marketing Grants and then the Durango Creates Grants as well. Both grant programs were, followed the same process of an initial vet by staff, or in the case of the Durango Creates Grant, the Durango Creative District staff. Once they pass that initial kind of completeness review, they go on to a panel or a committee of subject matter experts. Those subject matter experts review all grants and then make their final recommendations to city council found on tonight's regular agenda. Just a quick summary, between the two grant programs, there's fifteen projects up for potential approval. About forty-five to fifty thousand dollars of total funding. Both of these are within the available budget for each program. In the case of Durango Creates, they are moving forward with recommendations that would use the remainder of their two thousand and twenty-five budget. This is the final round of that grant program, so it's in line with our plan for the year. And then the Local Event Marketing Grant, we had a little bit less of an appetite of applicants in round two. So we're actually coming in under budget for two thousand and twenty-five. That's a quick summary of the two grant programs that are on tonight's agenda. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have about either grant program at this time.
Tommy, I got an ancillary question on this. And there was a conversation that started talking about the fact, could, could a group of organizations band together, apply for grant money that then would be paid to a grant writer to augment, so, so get seed money to pay a grant writer to then fund for a larger grant perspective? Is that anything that's ever been discussed?
Good question. In the, in, in these two grants that are on tonight's agenda, no. For the Lodger's Tax Arts and Culture Grant, in the Lodger's Tax policy that was drafted based off of the agenda language, that is an allowable use. It kind of falls into the category of grant writing and feasibility studies. We, we haven't had an applicant to date with that exact request. We have had staff, I'm sorry, we have had certain applicants use some of their administrative fee to a grant writer that has assisted them with writing the Lodger's Tax Arts and Culture Grant. So in short, on tonight's grants, wouldn't be an eligible grant project for the Lodger's Tax Arts and Culture Grant that would be an eligible grant request.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Follow-up, follow-up question to Kip's question. Okay, so if there was an applicant who wanted to use the method that Kip described as using the grant to get a grant writer, could that be submitted this fiscal year? Is there a late application or would they have to wait until next cycle?
Are, the only grant that has remaining, remaining rounds or eligibility for two thousand and twenty-five would be would be the Renew Grant. All other grant programs have faced their final round or closed out for 2025, with the exception of the Renew Grant and potentially the URA Grant, the Midtown Peak Grant, that one technically is still open. So to answer your original question, it's likely we would see that type of project presented in the first round of 2026. You're welcome.
Yes, please, thanks, Mayor. Tommy, could you remind me, when the first round of the marketing grant, was that also under applied for and did, or did we give out the max amount during that first round?
The first round, we had a significant, significantly higher interest. Year-to-date, we saw, that first round, we saw 29 projects requesting, sorry, 29 projects that were awarded about $95,000. It tends to be that first round of the year, you have a larger, a longer runway for projects to take place. The second round, knowing that grants have to be reimbursed by December 1st, there's simply just a shorter period for those projects to take place. We moved from, in 2024, a rolling application window to fixed deadlines. As we plan our 2026 deadlines for this program, we're potentially looking at three deadlines to offer a little bit less of a big appetite upfront to try to ease that out, ease that demand out through the year a little bit.
Gotcha. I guess that was kind of what I was leading to is was there any sort of process to look at to maybe get people to, you know, especially if it's the final day of the year is the deadline, you know, kind of puts people against the wall. So, okay, great, well, that's great. I'm glad that you guys were able to look at that and makes necessary changes. So thank you.
You're welcome.
One more thing, Mayor, I really appreciated the conversation you had this morning at mornings with El Moro. So I thought that was a banner crowd. I thought people were very engaged in those. I hope we can continue to do those kind of community outreaches because you seem very popular this morning. Thanks for doing that.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the Community Development Quarterly Update.
Sorry, a little shorter. Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council, Jamie Lockpo, here to give the Community Development Quarterly Update. Let's move forward. So definitely going to align with emission vision and values. We're definitely providing outstanding services. We're looking to improve our development review process, providing great customer service to all our applicants and property owners. So the first thing I want to talk to you about is upcoming code amendments and adoptions. We've got several things on the docket that are going to be coming forward to city council that I wanted to let you know about. So first, our land use and development code. The purpose of that is really to guide and regulate our land use and development within the city to ensure we have orderly growth and development. And so that's a living document. So it's updated from time to time, whether it's for best practices, new trends. In some cases, it's for state law, order to address community concerns. So some of the ones that we have on here are going to be for state law purposes. So we're working on a lot of those this year that will be before you by the end of the year. So the process of that would be, will we go to the Community Development Commission first? They will have a public hearing, collect public comments on what they perceive in the amendments, they will make a recommendation to city council. So then staff will prepare a packet to city council that will have, of course, the red lines of the changes, our staff report to explain those changes, as well as a recommendation from the Community Development Commission. And city council, we have the ordinance to be able to review that and make the final determination on any amendments to our land use and development code. So the parking amendments are going to be the first amendments to come before you. These will include things related to electric vehicle parking, as well as a couple of other cleanup items that we have. Usually, if we have a set of amendments, we try to take the opportunity to clean up things here and there that, to provide clarity. So there'll be a couple of those in there as well. One that is a state requirement is our non-functional turf. That will be before you by the end of the year, required to adopt that by the end of the year. We have the Wildfire Resiliency Code, that's also something the state adopted this year. And that's going to both be something as a code for our building code to adopt it, as well as changes to our land use and development code. Their requirements are March 31st, 2026 for adoption and then June 1st implementation. Our intent is to have those to you by the end of the year. Because of that, we have, it's a lot of landscaping changes in the land use code. So we wanted to pair that with a non-functional turf since they're both landscape-related and bring them to you by the end of the year. In addition, we have the 2024 International Building Codes that we are going to also ask to adopt by the end of the year. And so it's easier to lump those together, to have the wildfire code and the international building codes together in one fell swoop and have them all be effective January 1st. Makes it a little bit easier to implement those things to the developers and let them know about sweeping changes that are coming all at once. And, oh, and right now we're operating under the 2018 International Building Codes, and so this will bring us to 2024. All right, next, some of our data. This is a snapshot of our land use permit activity. Our land use permits are things that range anywhere from signs and fences, change of use, design reviews, limited use, special use, conditional use, temporary use, preapplications, alteration certificates, and our vacation rentals. So the blue represents the number of applications that have been submitted in each month, and orange is the applications that have been issued or approved. And you sometimes will see that the orange number is higher than the blue number, and that reflects applications that carried over from the previous month or the previous quarter that were just approved subsequent. And so as of June 30th, 2025, we have 110 active land use permits. And that means it's still actively under review. It could be that we're still reviewing it or we're waiting for a response from the applicant on those. Next is our code compliance. We're utilizing C Click Fix. That's something that we have available on the city's website for anybody to report a concern. And so I'll address it from a community development perspective. The graph on the side reflects the requests that were sent to community development staff during those months. And that can be anything for a sign, a fence, lighting, blights, anything land use related would be sent to the community development department. And we would send out our code compliance officer to take a look at it and to see if in fact there's something that we need to pursue on that. And you will note there is a spike in cases in the month of May. We did have one individual who submitted several signed things in one month. So that was what that high demand is for on that. We'll roll into building permits. This is our monthly data for the second quarter of building permits. There are several types of building permits. Most things are covered under a general building permit, but we do also have mechanical, solar, roof, and demolition permits. And right now, our electrical and plumbing permits are handled through the state of Colorado. So blue is the number of permits submitted each month, and orange is the number that are issued. And again, you might see that there are numbers that are higher than previously from carryover for previous month for getting things approved. And just to note, we do actually publish a PDF each month on our website that shows our building permit data for the public to be able to view. And then as of June 30th, we had 216 active permits, and that means that it's either still under review by staff, waiting for comments by the developer, or that it's actually under construction. So that has a little bit of a different nuance. And so this map will show you, this is all 216 of our active building permits in our system as of June 30th. Seems to be pretty spread out this quarter. And lastly, I wanted to add in inspections for you. So we have several types of inspections. The blue line is going to be just inspections that are done by the building. So it's our building, roof, mechanical, deck, code compliance, that's what you see in blue. Orange is all inspections, including building. And that adds in, we have engineering that does inspections, excavation permits, crossconnections, our arborists, planning and vacation rentals are all additional types of inspections that we have. And so you'll see inspections tend to run a little bit high in June, you'll see a big difference because we had a lot of historical permits that were kind of hanging out there with inspections that had been done, which weren't buttoned up. So that's where you see a spike in inspections in June, is we were trying to button up some of the open permits. Last couple of things, we have a major projects done. Our Durango Surgery Center in Nighthorse Circle had their CO issued in May and ribbon cutting in July 15th. And then REI, they had their CO issued on July 14th. Their grand opening is planned for August 22nd, but they did have their soft opening on July 25th. So they are currently open, but the grand opening is technically August 22nd. The last thing I wanted to share is OpenGov. So OpenGov is our permitting software. It allows us to do 100% of our review online and tracking through construction inspection all the way through their certificate of occupancy. It's increased our communication or accessibility to the public and allowing anyone to view and track the progress of a permit live online. Whether you're the applicant or you're just somebody looking at a permit, anybody can look at that online. It also gives us the ability to create and report and track analytics, and that's where the data from this report came from is, is from our OpenGov software. So I wanted to share with you that we recently celebrated our one-year anniversary of that. So over the past year, we've issued over 700 permits and conducted over 1,300 inspections, continuing to learn better ways to utilize the tool and evolve the way to better serve the customers with that software. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Jane. Hey, I have one question. Okay, so with your inspections, is there any way to vet out how many inspections there are per project? You know, like say for a house inspection, you know, do we have a dozen? Or maybe for a commercial inspection, do we have like maybe 25? And in how many projects that encompasses?
There isn't a standard number for every commercial permit gets 20 inspections. It's going to vary on what type of construction they're doing. We, I can get you a general idea of type of inspections, like a new residential house will get X number and a new commercial building will get X number. But there are, I mean, 20, 30 different types of inspections that we can do at any time. If it's just a roof permit, we're just going to do one or two, probably the initial and the final. Same for like a mechanical permit. It's the, the big projects like an REI that we would be doing 20, 30 inspections on.
All righty, because I'm just curious how many properties get completed and how many inspections per property? But we can think about this more, but thank you. Okay, Kip, do you have a question?
Sure.
Yeah, yeah, cool. Hi, Jamie, thank you. Do we know yet if the wildfire resiliency code will adversely affect housing or affordable housing? Will it make things more expensive? Is there any sort of evidence to support or not support that at all yet?
Not yet. I mean, we have it on our radar that there are going to be changes, and it's not so much for existing housing. It's going to be more impacted by people who do renovations. If you touch more than 25% to your roof, you're going to have to make it of a material compliant. If you touch more than 25% of a wall, you're going to have to make it compliant. We're going to have impacts from a planning perspective that combustible materials, like you're any type of fencing or trees or mulch is going to have to be within a certain, moved a certain distance away from the structure. But again, that's only for new construction or if you're touching that area. So existing stuff will not be impacted by this unless they do something to modify the property.
Gotcha. Beyond landscaping, I guess I'm thinking more of like building materials that may be more expensive because of their, their fire resilience. But do we know, do they have a process at all or a variance process for any sort of new builder to apply for, like if it's going to be an affordable development that they can use some different material that maybe is cheaper, but maybe not as wildfire resilient? And I'm asking because I, I just, what I don't want to do is like, even though it's coming, I just want to know like, what are the impacts going to be to affordable housing? And something that's already a very challenging environment in our community.
Sure. I don't know that there's an actual variance process in place. There is, they do have a wildfire board, and if the city chose to want to modify the regulations they have set down, we could propose something to their wildfire board, and they would have to make a judgment call as to whether they would approve what we would ask them to change.
So it's a state wildfire board that we would appeal to? I see. Then I assume there's a formal process that we would have to go through to do that? Okay, well, that's good to know that we have some small lever to pull. Okay, great. And I have one more question, but go ahead, Kip.
Sure. Yeah, actually dovetails. We, we were up at CML. I heard a presentation by a small municipality that had been instituting the 2024 building codes and as well as the wildfire. One of the key issues they brought up, just as an information piece, was that they had contacted the businesses in the area that sold the materials and gave them a heads up on what was happening because they saw a huge surge in requests for those materials, obviously, with the construction. So I hope we have something planned to be able to reach out to those entities that are selling the materials and let them know that these new codes would be implemented. Does that make sense?
Yes. We have been, anytime we can make, create a touch point with somebody, whether it's somebody asking for a building permit now, or somebody we regularly deal with, like a Reynolds Ash, we're letting them know that we're implementing this, we're putting it on the city's website, we're putting it as email signatures for the Community Development Department, and we will create educational opportunities to, to share the information of what we're doing. We're reviewing the codes right now because we have the ability to amend them. We don't have to just sweep across the board and, and, because you can't regulate everyone with the same set of regulations. So the DFPD is looking at the International Fire Code, and they will ask us to make certain amendments to cater to what they're going to look for. And we're looking at the remainder of the codes to see if there's any amendments we would like to make to those.
Okay, and so at the end of that process, we would be contacting maybe Home Depot and Lumber League Yards and those folks to tell them what materials they should be thinking about are going to be required.
The building codes, they probably should be fairly aware of those. The wildfire code, we might need to let them know that's coming.
Sorry, wildfire codes would have been, yeah. Okay, thank you on that. I do not know what non-functional turf is. Could you explain that to me?
I don't know that I have a great determination, other than it's typically the areas you'll see like medians or street medians where people are putting turf that is not going to survive and it has no real functions there. So that's why I call it non-functional. They like to see a ground cover or something else there versus a turf.
Okay, great. Thank you very much for that. The, as you're examining things like parking and ordinances, do, do we often have the other departments giving us feedback on ordinances or existing rules and regulations that are hurdles for them, that, that cause enforcement issues, anything along those lines? Is that kind of communication going on between the departments?
Yes.
Okay, good. Simple one-word answer, we like that. All right. Last thing, I have seen a timeline where we track how much time a permit is spent in our office, how much time a permit is spent out with the client or the, their engineers. Is that going to be something that's a part of the quarterly presentations?
We are creating that. We're finding some of the things in OpenGov we thought were being tracked were not, so we have to actually create the stopgap for those. For a building permit, it's fairly simple that you, when they submit it, you get a date, when you issue it, you get a date. So you get, you know, okay, it took 30 days to get that permit. For planning permits, we don't have an actual issuance date for some of them. So we're creating an approval date in those, so we'll be able to at least know from start to finish, it took X number of days for them to get a permit. It's a little bit more difficult to track how many days it was with us versus how many days it was with them.
Okay. I would just say that it's, it was an awfully illustrative piece of information to know how long it had sat out with the client. They often came with a complaint on how long the permitting process was, and when we saw those pieces of how long it sat on their side of the equation, it seemed to, to be a good point to be able to be raised. So, thank you very much.
Yeah, last question, Jamie. You said that we are still soliciting plumbing and electrical permits to the state. Those were within our city jurisdiction previously, correct?
We have the ability to do both plumbing and electrical here. However, for electrical, you have to have a licensed journeyman to be able to do those, which we do not have. So the state will continue to do those. For plumbing inspections, we did turn those over to the state as of January 1st this year because of lack of staffing. Now that we are fully staffed, we will be sending a letter to the state in October to take those back over. However, it will not take effect until January 1st of 2026.
Gotcha. That was my progression question was to just see if we're going to try to solicit those to be back in house. So that's great. I think that's awesome. Thank you.
Yes.
Excellent. Any other questions? No more questions?
There are no further items on the agenda, Mayor.
We're adjourned. Thank you, Jane. Done at the right time. All righty. Wow. What, we're adjourned?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm just looking at my notes here. Yeah. Yeah.